That was a different introduction, Mary. Very nice.
Good morning and welcome to the August 1st business meeting. And I'd like to start out by asking our county administrator Gary Schmidt to please[95.52][95.52]introduce and take a roll.
Yes, thank you, Chair. First staff support today, Amanda Keller, County Council, Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board, roll call Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. I want to make a note that we have screens here, so if you'll see us looking down, we're looking at our screens because we, some of us don't have the greatest eyesight. I don't know who that is.
Is it you?
Pledge of, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gary, what's up first?
First, we have a presentation proclaiming Clackamas County to be a Purple Heart County and recognize August 7th as Purple Heart Day. Commissioner Humberston will lead this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Before I begin, this is particularly important to me. My father served in the United States Marine Corps during World War II. He actually enlisted six months before Pearl Harbor. He was shot on Saipan, survived, but he hit three islands during the Pacific campaigns. He then went in the reserves like so many men did after the war and had the unpleasant opportunity to go to Korea all the way to Chosin Reservoir and back. But I still have his Purple Heart at home. He said, "Don't go in the Marine Corps," but like the disobedient child I was, I went into the Marine Corps. So it has a certain amount of personal effect for me. So let me begin. Proclaiming Clackamas County to be a Purple Heart County and recognizing August 7th as Purple Heart Day. Whereas the Purple Heart was initially created as the badge of military merit by George Washington in 1782 and is the oldest military decoration in present use. And whereas the Purple Heart is specifically awarded to any member of the United States Armed Services who has been wounded or killed in combat with a declared enemy of the United States. And whereas Clackamas County has had numerous residents make the ultimate sacrifice in many of the world wars and has many resident veterans that have been awarded the Purple Heart for wounds received in combat. And whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities, putting themselves in danger for our country and for the good of all. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of men and women of Clackamas County who have served the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Clackamas County is honored to become a Purple Heart County and we support our veterans and appreciate the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms. Now therefore, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim Clackamas County to be a Purple Heart County and recognizes Wednesday, August 7th, 2019, as Purple Heart Day. And we encourage all citizens to honor and support our veterans for the sacrifices and contributions that they have made to this great country. Dated this first day of August 2019 by the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
All right. Aren't we, wasn't there some mention of a photo?
After you.
We're going to make a motion.
Oh, okay. Excuse me. With that, any discussion by the Board?
No.
No? I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we proclaim Clackamas County to be a Purple Heart County and recognize August 7th as Purple Heart Day.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded a couple of times, that we proclaim Clackamas County be a Purple Heart County and recognize August 7th as Purple Heart Day. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say, Mr. Chairman, thank you to all the veterans who've shown up here today. I appreciate your attendance and I hope this small gesture means something to you. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you, the attendance at Clackamas Community College was great and it was basically a thank you for the thank you you may not have received when you came home. So from the Board of County Commissioners, I'd like to thank you for your service in Vietnam and other areas. And with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much and... So, Mary, photo?
Yes.
Okay.
If all the veterans could come forward for a photo with the Commissioners. You need to get it. Can you get everyone?
It's not finalized and it's not done and the whole project got delayed quite some time. So I'd like to request at some point when that is developed and we have a legal chair to go with it, maybe I could stop by and show you two minutes of...
Oh, we'll show it for sure.
Good. Not a problem.
But thank you very much.
Thank you.
And by the way, thanks for the hats.
Well, next up is citizen communication. I have Jeanne Robinson and Bill Weir. Or Bill, do you want to come up with James? Go ahead, come on up. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me the opportunities to speak. And Commissioner Humberston, as a Marine Mom, hurrah.
Hurrah.
My name is Jeanne Robinson. Forty-six years ago, I moved from Portland to my home in what is now Damascus, Oregon. When making my purchase, I was under the impression that I would be living on Deep Creek Road in Damascus, only to learn after moving in that the road name had changed to 232nd Drive and was considered part of Boring, Oregon. After nearly three decades, I received a phone call from Dee Westcott, at that time unknown to me. He introduced himself, told of his family's pioneer involvement in the community, and shared with me his great dream, that Damascus would become Oregon's newest city. Initially, I was lukewarm to the idea, but his voice was excited on the phone. He shared his vision for the city of Damascus with me. I asked scads of questions and about 20 minutes later, I was sold. I welcomed our new city and I was proud to share my new address with my friends and business associates. I smiled every time I drove into our city center and saw the beautiful Damascus signs. I loved it when our city hall opened. I followed our elections and always voted with great thought. I loved our Damascus police car. I loved everything about being part of the city of Damascus. Yes, I realized that there was some trouble brewing within the community and there seemed to be some very angry folks. It was quickly apparent that those folks, rather than working to correct problems, were dead-set on ending our city. At the time, I couldn't understand why they were so angry or nasty. I watched as slick and professionally-prepared mailings came to my home with increasing regularity, decrying the very existence of our city and urging everyone to vote for disincorporation. Now by nature, I'm a believer in not throwing out the baby with the bathwater. We had accomplished much in becoming a city and fixing problems is what government is supposed to do. That is why when the city asked for citizen volunteers to come and serve on a citizen, or excuse me, a charter review committee in late 2015, I volunteered. I remember coming to those meetings, sitting around a table with other citizens and some of the council members as we reviewed the charter, section by section, and discussed proposals for correcting things that weren't working as well as intended. During those weeks, on a few occasions, we left the building and passed through a crowd of angry picketers. Can you imagine? Here we were as citizens, being picketed as we worked to make their city better, a better place for them. It was unfathomable to me that our work could be viewed as something that was worthy of protest. After several weeks, our work was completed and charter amendments were prepared for the ballot in the May 2016 election. Unfortunately, that ballot also contained what has now been found to have been an unlawful measure to disincorporate our city. And you'll all know what happened since then. I cannot express my joy at learning that James DeYoung, now our appointed mayor, had succeeded in winning his appeal against this unlawful action.
You can finish up. Go ahead.
Thank you. And our lovely city of Damascus was back. Once I learned that council meetings were taking place, I began attending and offering my support to the mayor and council members. To my absolute honor, I was asked to fill a vacancy on the city council and last week I was sworn in to position four. I come before you today to let you know that I'm one of a large and ever-growing group of Damascus citizens that want our city to continue. We've heard, you have heard, many of the angry loud voices from the past, some of whom are no longer Damascus residents as they have long since annexed their property into Happy Valley. Some of you, by your actions, have apparently accepted that their intense desire to destroy our city is universal among our citizens. And with this regard for the appellate court decision, you have apparently been advised to give no support to our community as we move forward. In spite of your lack of assistance, we have submitted required documents, restored our city government following the rules established by our city charter, charter in accordance with Oregon's Home Rule laws, and we have created a city website to share government and community activities with our city residents. Respectfully, we have a quieter, far more polite, and extremely fervent group of citizens that do not agree with the loud protesters. Most of us now realize the true agenda that spurred many of the disincorporate Damascus movement. We do not want to become Happy Valley East. We are Damascus and we are here to stay. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Weir at Damascus. First of all, I just, I want to thank you for what you did this morning for the veterans. That was great and I think it's a good reminder for everybody. At last week's commission meeting, there were general comments made by Commissioners that have specific application to the situation in Damascus. One was about citizens who come before you, that you have an attitude of respect and openness to listen to what was said. The other is concerning your understanding of your role for the common good for everyone in Clackamas County as Commissioners. Concerning the first matter, another way beside hostility to discourage citizen participation is to ignore what is brought before you. A case in point, on June 29, 2017, I brought before you my concern about the Commissioners' transfer of sale to the fire district of a Damascus property. I brought up concerns of a highly questionable appraisal used in establishing a low-ball sales price, the close to the public non-bid process of the procedure, and possible corrupt influence involving disincorporation interests. There was some acknowledgement of a concern expressed on commission with some follow-up promised. The next week, July 6, 2017, it seemed generally agreed by Commissioners that in spite of these glitches, it was in the common good for the east area of Clackamas County. In fact, the chairman said that he would have given it to the fire district anyway. That was it. End of the story for the commission, but answers to Damascus taxpayers were never given that I know of. At the least, this deprived us of the use of a meeting place for the city. On this point of common good, former President Carter once said, "It's difficult for the common good to prevail against the intense concentration of those who have a special interest, especially if the decisions are made behind locked doors." Common good for Damascus is not limited to what you deem beneficial to the whole of Clackamas County and at the same time participate in the downfall of Damascus. It will take more than no outreach to the community for the last three years, relying on fake news, disincorporation activists, moneyed interests, and failed legislation propped up with a new label to form your perspective. I would encourage you to open up additional channels of communication, starting with Mayor DeYoung. Thank you.
Thank you.
I gave you a new...
Pardon?
The other side.
Oh, yeah. And Brainer Bauer?
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Bernard and other members of the county commission. I'm James DeYoung, the newly and duly-appointed mayor of Damascus, as I explained last week in my testimony here. This past week, I received a note from Stephen Madkour, County Council. In this, he indicated that he had been in correspondence with or connection with the Department of the Tax Assessor and so forth. And he indicated that he'd put our documents that I requested last week on a thumb drive for me to pick up from his office, which I'll do today. I appreciate this generous offer to fix the issue of how we get copies of the city documents, but I make the point again, we don't want copies, we want the originals. In light of the appellate court's decision that in effect nullified the vote on disincorporation and in effect nullified your right to possess the original documents that belong to us. The city never surrendered its charter. It never ceased to exist. You possess documents that are not yours. Then on Tuesday, the county council sent me an email indicating that in response to my contacting the county assessor as to why they were not going to levy a tax rate for Damascus, and he gave indication to their response that way. I'm really disappointed in the action of the county council to recommend that that not take place, that the county assessor not allow us to have a tax levy. It means that now Damascus cannot raise needed revenue to spend on vital city services. Our tax rate, by the way, is the lowest in the area or among the very lowest in the county and displaces or replaces the identical county rate levied by the county on Damascus for the last three years, its equivalent, .57 cents per thousand. The council went on to suggest that we should not attempt to resurrect Damascus as it was in 2016, but consider undertaking efforts to incorporate anew. Those are his words. Well, here's my slightly modified reply to him, which is now my reply to this commission this morning. I'm disappointed that you, as county council, have so counseled your county tax assessor. I wonder why you're willing to say that you'll proceed as directed when wants the courts or the legislature provide the clarity that is necessary, when you're not willing to abide by the appellate court decision. For about 10 weeks since May the 1st, the appellate court decision was the law, yet for these many weeks, you and the office of county council ignored it, weeks during which there was no other alternative by legislation or the courts. During this time, there was no other legislation. Your office and the county commission provide little confidence that with a new contrary decision, that you will abide by it. And for that matter, why should the city abide by any decision contrary to it? But we will not follow your example of contempt for the law. I spoke almost two weeks ago before the county commission that contempt for the law by governmental leaders breeds further contempt for the law among the people. What a heavy responsibility you bear as county council advising the commission as you do and many other people in government. I think that last Thursday morning, during our council, during our commission meeting here, there was for the first time more of an open discussion. But I reject the idea expressed then that the county is a neutral observer of the conundrum of Damascus, caught in the middle of a conflict, as it were. The county deliberately rejected or ignored the appellate court decision, making no mention of it in the letter the commission sent to the state legislature and stating that the issue of Damascus need to be resolved once and for all by legislation. In addition, Chair Bernard personally testified to this effect. Finally, I concluded my letter to county council that I think it is belittling to us in condescending for you to suggest that we should start another Damascus. It suggests a hidden agenda to destroy, to terminate Damascus. So once again, I appealed to the county commission to abide by what is now the law. Grant IGA's with law enforcement, fire protection, law and sewer services, and return what belongs to the city. My five-point plan for reconciliation is still on the table. Just last Thursday, our city council, by Resolution 19-703, authorized me and our city attorney to resolve boundary and other legal disputes that we have with the county commission and with Happy Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Brainer?
If I can, Chair, if I can just respond. Mr. DeYoung, I was a couple of weeks ago or so, maybe three, that you and I spoke on the phone, the last time we spoke on the phone. And I had indicated to you our experience with Happy Valley Parks District dispute and that what I learned lesson from that was that the Department of Revenue, the State Department of Revenue, basically instructs and authorizes the county tax assessor to impose a tax. And it's not solely the authority or delegated the authority on the county assessor. Again, the instruction comes from the state. And as a result of the Senate Bill 226, I believe is the one that was passed this last legislative session, that instruction, or that instruction that was basically authorized the vote, or the previous vote in 2016 or 2015 of the disincorporation vote. So in turn, that one has to instruct the Secretary of State ultimately to recognize or not that the vote that took place, that of the disincorporation vote that took place passed was valid or not valid. So once that is, as I understand it, and this is again based on the information, I'm not legal counsel, but again, this is a state issue, that once the Secretary of State does what they had need to do, then the Department of Revenue, if the Secretary says that the vote that took place, the disincorporation was invalid, okay, then the DOR, Department of Revenue, would have the instruction to reimpose or direct the county tax assessor to go ahead and impose the vote. So it's not our, it's not our discretion to make that call. This is a state issue. And then once we have that clear signal and we have conflicting information, you know, we have a conflict here. And once that is cleared up, then I guess our county tax assessor will have the authority, not our county council per se. I'm not diminishing the authority or the knowledge of the county council, but all to say that I believe that what we have learned from that is that the DOR instructs, instructs the county tax assessor, just like the Secretary of State instructs the county clerk.
Well, thank you. Let me reply with just two points. My point this morning is to say that with the appellate court decision on May the 1st, that was the law of the land, and why the county council then advised the county to adhere to that and so forth is confounding. And secondly, should, well, we can be sure that the present law, Senate Bill 226, now law, will be challenged. And I'm simply saying this morning, I trust that the county, along with the state department, such as Department of Revenue, will immediately respond favorably if the courts finally upheld again the reality of Damascus, rather than let an interim period go by by which perhaps another bill or another law or another whatever is made to put off the final decision about Damascus and put it all further down the road. So that's my concern.
Yep. And I do thank, I do thank you again for your rationale and your demeanor and so forth. And I think that we should not be at odds. We try to work through this conundrum, because it is a conundrum and there's a lot of legal entanglements that again are at the state level, but I think that a good dialogue going forward would do us all well and as opposed to being adversarial. And I know that you had made an appeal to meet with the chair and offer some ideas of reconciliation, but again, I think we are relying upon the state some degrees, but I would, I would appreciate a good discourse and conversation from here forward. So I appreciate your approach.
Well, thank you. We welcome that as well. And next time, I'll share my five-point plan with the county.
Yeah, one thing of interest and which you could answer, not necessarily now, but in the future, is that my understanding is that the last city council meeting, they dropped the tax rate to zero. Now, cities can do that. We didn't always tax our max either, but the charter may have said that in order to raise taxes, you have to have a vote of the people. So that would be something I'd be interested in learning about. You might be able to answer that quickly, I don't know.
I can answer that quickly.
Okay.
When that decision was made in May, actually, the first, or the end of June in 2016, in order to set a budget for the forthcoming year, the vote for disincorporation had already occurred. So our city council, acting on the belief that that vote was legitimate, reduced the tax rate to zero because obviously after the official date of July the 17th, Damascus by that law was ceasing to exist. So it reduced it to zero. Now with the declaration that that law was illegal or nullity or to be nullified, using words of the appellate court decision, that decision made by our council in June was uninformed and based on illegal information or improper information or misinformation, maybe that's the word I'm looking for, and therefore does not stand just that the city ceased to exist. So that decision ceased to exist. So the rate was never reduced to zero. It goes back to what it was in 2015 to 16, which was... It goes back to what it was in 2015 to sixteen, which was two point eight eight per thousand. And so the council said, well, we want to have a very economic city going forward, just bare bones for this coming year at least, so we set the new tax rate, reducing it from two point eight eight, which was the legal designation for 2015 and sixteen, to point five seven. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
No. I need a lot more explanation than that.
Well, I'm saying as, the, the parallel is if, if the whole decision in two thousand, in, on May the seventeenth, 2016 was illegal, then all the decisions based upon that decision are nullified as well, and that was the reduction of our tax rate to zero. So we didn't have to deal with somehow raising that or not raising it and so forth.
Well, you, you described as being misinformed, not necessarily illegal, but misinformed.
Sure, or misrepresented.
But, but misinformed or not a decision was made. So I mean, I, it's, it's an interesting.
Well, let me say something in general. Neither the state nor our city nor this county has ever been down this road before. There's never been a city that has been revived by a court decision.
That's true.
So it raises all kinds of questions about unchartered territory. All I'm saying for now is that with legal counsel information, we determined that that decision reducing the tax rate to zero was based on misinformation, actually based on an illegal act, and therefore that decision does not stand legal scrutiny. And therefore we start again with a new tax rate, whatever we decide.
All right.
That help?
Assuming it's not over the two-point.
What?
Mr. Chairman, maybe this, maybe this helps. Normally if A equals B and B equals C and C equals D and D equals E, then A equals E. However, if A does not equal B, then all the rest falls away.
That's really helpful.
Thank you very much, Ken. Counselor.
Which is the fundamental question.
Commissioner Humbertson, thank you very much.
Thank you. Raynard?
Yes, good morning. So I have a very different topic. I was invited as a small retailer in Clackamas County, so somebody's Raynard Brower, I'm from Clackamas County, as a small retailer, and one of the things we sell is tobacco. So I was invited to be part of a tobacco committee talking about should we have a license in Clackamas County? And I've never smoked and I do what I can to actually just give people alternatives to avoid smoking, and I don't do advertising and other measures, but I must carry tobacco in this, this small business that I also run, or it loses a percentage of customers. So I also value the, the need for government and the place for government and bureaucracy, if you want to call it that, to, to level the playing field and influence and all of an environment that furthers our health but still preserves our societal freedoms. I'm actually shocked and surprised I would say that about tobacco, but, I mean, but it comes, it's across the board. I mean, we, we have to, people need to have a choice. Part of the, the enthusiasm towards the whole topic of tobacco licenses children and our youth and trying to avoid encouragement and, and some of this encouragement is obviously historical and, and influenced that, that affects someone's entire life, and so I certainly support that. So I'll say, I, I am troubled by the committee process, how it occurred, and I'm struggling with even though I really thank your staff for reaching out and saying, please tell us what, what your experience was, and I'm trying to find a way of doing that constructively. Today I come and I really just came down to say, to bring to your attention one topic that I think is fundamental, and it, it puts a new perspective, it takes some guts on the county's part, but, so we also sell, and that's, it's, it's connected together, we sell beer and wine. Our liquor commission in Oregon levels the playing field, and if you aren't familiar with how they do that, please look into it. I'm, I think it's a foundation of our economy in that industry, but they level the playing field by preventing distributors from using advertising or even the amount that you sell as leverage to how much you buy or what price you buy beer and wine. And it's unique to a large degree in this nation. It needs to be preserved, and I think a lot can be learned from that model when it comes to tobacco. So for example, I don't partake in signing a contract with tobacco, and as a result, I pay in large cases more than what I can buy, if I was legally allowed to, buy it from a retail store for. So it costs me more, and I sell it for more, which is a discouragement, but it's a, it's a compromise I make. But I just invite you to take a really strong look and, and even if it's a little guts, step out of the box and look at what Oregon Liquor Commission is doing and if there's a way to think different.
I think it's interesting in that liquor, they actually control, you know, what products they allow in the store, and I don't know that we would ever have that opportunity to do that, or, and I guess that's, not signing a contract, you have more flexibility than...
Oh, when you have a contract, you're required to carry a broad range of products.
Okay.
The size of your display and the amount of advertising, or you don't get the enormous discount. So you get, you get penalized seriously financially, you know, and so the tobacco license process, if it's $600 a year, got it pretty much forces me into taking on a contract. It's just, it's going against what our goal is. I mean, you're, the staff in Clackamas County, the health staff, I, I can't say enough good things about them and their attitude and feelings and the enthusiasm here. Also, just to, one clarification, the liquor commission, when you think of liquor from a liquor store, you're correct. When you're talking about beer and wine, that's a whole different. So please make a distinction between the two when you look at how L C C functions, you know. So there's two different models. They're both very beneficial to our economy, curiously enough, but.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Gary, what's up next?
We have a board discussion item commissioners, which is a resolution declaring a state of emergency and emergency measures to address the housing crisis. Richard Swift, the Director of Health, Housing and Human Services, will be the presenter.
Thank you, Richard. Come in.
Good morning, commissioners.
I thought you were wearing a suit today.
Actually, that's in my car. Actually, I have to apologize for the casual attire for the morning. I had this on my calendar, but I missed it, and we are meeting with the governor later today, and I do have my suit in my car. But anyway, what we have before us today is a resolution which is a continuance of the emergency declaration regarding houselessness that we had enacted last year. And so it had come to, forward to H three S regarding essentially reinitializing that action for the upcoming year. And so the resolution you have in front of you is essentially verbatim except for date changes and, and actually one add to this, which is the requirement to make sure that the board chair, Chair Bernard, and then the administrator, Administrator Schmidt, are in the loop in signing anything that we're going to be doing regarding reaction or methods regarding the emergency for houselessness. So at that point, I guess I open up for discussion and questions regarding the resolution that's in front of the board.
Yeah, I think Paul had some questions on this. Why no he doesn't?
Yeah, and it's, I, and I spoke to, that's more, more legal, it's not necessarily direct, question directed towards, towards Rich. But I noticed, and it's not that it's a change, but in the second whereas, it cites county code chapter six point oh three, and I realized by reading it, functionally, it's, doesn't make a lot of sense in as far as how we, how we notice and who's become aware. I mean, the point of contact, whether it's the sheriff's office who realizes there's an emergency or whether it's H three S or whatever, the, the chain of the protocols really, the point of contact is the administrator. So the way it reads is, the way it reads is the administrator is actually last on the list of the series of county chair, vice chair, vice chair unavailable, the remaining board member and, and so on or designee. So, but when I spoke to county council this morning, it's something that perhaps we need to work on as far as cleaning up six point oh three to make that more practical. But there again, the, the, the therefor's are the part that actually, you know, five covers that, you know, the added section five that was pointed out. And the other thing is I also want to get on the record that the boxes checked on the last page, consistent with last year, and I just, just for the record here, is box F, commit to mutual aid agreements, box G, suspend standard competitive bidding process, bidding procedures to obtain necessary goods, services and or equipment utilizing the procedures in the Clackamas County Local Contract Review Board rules, H, redirect funds for emergency use, I, order such other measures as are found to be immediately necessary for the protection of life and or property, and J, authorize county staff to explore the acquisition temporarily or permanently by purchase, lease or otherwise, sites suitable for shelter, temporary housing, or installation of temporary housing units for the homeless population and to enter into arrangements necessary to prepare or equip such sites to support and utilize those housing units. And finally, K, waive county, Clackamas County Code regulations, administrative rules and fees to the extent necessary impossible to respond to the housing emergency. So those are the ones that are applicable to this one and boxes A through E are not. So I just want to get that clear because it wasn't checked as we did last year, they were identified. I do want to, so that's, overall, that's the only clarification I want to make for today. And my commentary, my commentary is getting back to G, is the, in the discussions we had in the last week or two, is making sure that we don't have an emergency order in perpetuity that again kind of evades some of the competitive bidding procedures, and that this really only is used as an emergency and not used as any other, any other mechanism or, or backstop in the event that there's been oversight or whatever it may be. It just, it's just really important to me that there's an accounting for every time this is used and that, and I spoke to the administrator this morning, that, that we are very responsible in how we use this. So I support it in concept, and I will support it today, but I just want to make sure we have those, those backstops, protocols in place.
Well, that's why we added your name and my name to it and that I would inform you guys too. Gary would probably inform me and I'd inform you guys, so, okay. Ken?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Savis mostly spoke to it. It's, it's an issue of making sure that the accountability is there if we're going to, if we're streamlining things and making certain that, you said, I guess you said it best, that, that you can't use the system to get around competitive bidding processes unnecessarily. So making sure there's a way of tracking it, that's essentially what we need to be doing. So I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I just want to appreciate the commitment of my colleagues and our staff and our county administrator for keeping this issue at the forefront of what's important because we know that we have, from our last homeless count, we have many homeless people, homeless families in Clackamas County, and projections are that things have not improved and when we get the report for our next homeless count, we're going to see that the numbers are not better. So it is of the utmost importance that we are able to act quickly and we are able to have government be nimble in its response to this crisis, and I am so appreciative that we all have this commitment. Really appreciate all of my colleagues being on this. From the moment I became a commissioner, all of you have been so supportive of making sure our staff have the tools that they need to act quickly, which we've had to do during emergency, winter time, which we may have to do in emergency if there were a heat wave sometime in August, we would have to be able to move quickly for cooling shelters. We must be there as quickly and capably as we can for those who are most vulnerable in our community. And then just as a piece of public awareness, which is what I am constantly sharing with, with my colleagues and with any of those that are watching this, we know, studies show that it costs twice as much to the taxpayer for someone to be homeless than it does to house them because of the use of our resources, our law enforcement, our jails, our health systems. It's really awful to be houseless out in our community, and we are working hard as a region to address this problem, and I am hopeful that collectively we will be able to move the dial on this issue. So thank you very much, Rich, for being here, and thank you to my colleagues.
Paul?
Yeah, I just want to, Commissioner Fisher's comments reminded me about the homeless count, and we had talked about that a couple of weeks ago, and I was a little bit surprised, somewhat pleased but somewhat surprised as well to see that we had some of the stats in our newsletter that I wasn't made aware of when we last spoke. So I appreciate having some of those stats, and I'm just wondering if today we have any better indication of when we might actually see the full report.
So I was not aware actually that they were going to be releasing those numbers in the Clacko Quarterly. So those are just the numbers. So I have a report on my desk in draft right now, actually was looking at it before I came up here this morning, and so we will be releasing that report shortly, which is the analysis of what the numbers mean and next steps regarding those numbers. And so you will be seeing that full report here shortly.
Yep. Well, it was about three years ago that I became aware of the number of homeless children that are in the school system and some that are not even in the school system, but just realizing that, and I appreciate getting kind of building again on what Commissioner Fisher said, that after her appointment and after the, of course, after the election of Commissioner Humbertson, this commission had a retreat early in twenty, when was it?
Seventeen.
Twenty seventeen already.
Long time ago now.
That the commission, you know, really made the housing issue a top priority and one of our goals, and then, you know, subsequent to that, months later, we did the resolution, the emergency resolution in, in preparation for the winter, the winter mints and the inclement weather. So that's, I think it's terribly important, and I think the economics of this and the impacts and savings and so forth, and health savings and so forth, how you capture those and get those redirected is, if not impossible, is mind boggling to actually capture that and, and say, okay, because it really is about money streams and cost and so forth that are difficult to quantify for one, and number two, almost impossible to capture.
Yeah, I, I became aware of homeless children when the Baldock Rest Area, they used to send school buses to pick up the kids at the rest area, and you know, there was some concern about homeless people living at the rest area, and I, the county stepped up and actually found places for those folks to live and provided the services they needed, and I, you know, and that's really what we're trying to do now, it's just the scale is much larger. And I don't know who was up first, Martha, so.
I think Martha was.
Okay, Martha?
Yeah, actually, I do have a question because we've been doing a lot of work in identifying pockets of poverty throughout the county and really honing in on what services we provide, what, how we address those particular issues. How is housing going to be integrated into that, you know, the efforts that we're making to identify those particular areas? I know that there's places in Estacada, I think surrounding Milwaukee, Canby area. So are we working with those jurisdictions directly now to, to look at a housing piece? Or?
So we are working directly, so I guess right off the start regarding the Metro Bond, we are working directly with Milwaukee.
Okay.
Related to Estacada and Canby, we are not working directly with those.
Because they're outside.
Entities because they're outside the metro area. And actually, what we do with those cities is, is a focus on developers. We end up actually interacting with developers before we, in the most part, interact with the cities. The reason that being is that the cities actually do not have much of a housing development capacity built into their.
What they do.
What they do. And so we are in conversation, I know that that'll be a C four topic that is discussed today.
Mm-hmm.
The department does not have a tremendous amount of capacity beyond its own development activities to assist cities.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sure.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to touch on two things in this conversation. One is Commissioner Fisher talked about the cost of, of.
One is, um, Commissioner Fisher talked about the cost of, of, uh, people on the streets to the taxpayer. And I know there was a recent study done in some of our major cities where the top 10% of people who interact with the services in general, because they're homeless, cost the taxpayers $250,000 a year each. For $250,000 a year, we can house a lot of people.
And much less.
Yeah, for a lot less money. So in working on these things, long-term, what we are doing is, is, um, fiscally more responsible than just leaving people on the streets and then trying to service them there. The other thing is, uh, I was aware as I, when I ran for this office, that the homelessness was out there. What I was not aware of was what tools we might have at our disposal to do something about it. And I want to thank Commissioner Savis because, uh, when I went to the very first, um, AOC convention meeting down in Lane County, he took me on a tour and I saw what they did in Lane County with the little Conestoga wagons and, and that sort of thing to house people. And that, and being the kind of hands-on pragmatist that I tend to be, that said, okay, there's something we can do, something specific. And that, what grew out of that is the, uh, the Veterans Village. And I hope that we can take that model and do more with it. But it's pragmatic, it's practical, it gets things done. It actually has an immediate and direct impact on people and it's not just pie in the sky. It's actually real. So I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Savis for that tour because it, it made me aware of what tools we might have available and we just need to keep working at this. We also need to remember that, um, to some degree, we're scratching the surface. If there are, was it 4,000 or 6,000 people waiting to get on the waiting list that has 2,000 people on it? This is going to be a long haul, quite frankly, but doing nothing is not an option. We do the best we can with what we've got, so. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
And on that, uh, tour that I took, um, I learned, I thought we could do better. And I think the Veterans Village is better. And, and it's proven successful. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Sonya. Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the resolution declaring a state of emergency and emergency measures to address the housing crisis.
Second.
Our timing's great today.
All together now, one, two, three?
With the amendments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I, I think we should amend it and add close the taverns and bars. I'm just kidding.
You're going to get us in trouble again.
Oh, you joke about that. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries and thank you very much.
Thank you. We really appreciate the board's support in this area so much. Thank you.
And we appreciate you.
Oh, thank you.
So please know that.
Thank you.
And all the staff here in Clackamas County doing this really hard work.
Yes, actually, they're more important than myself.
Thank you. Uh, on to the con-
Consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of an application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Continuum of Care Program for the annual renewal of funds. Approval of an intergovernmental subrecipient agreement, amendment number three, with the city of Wilsonville, Wilsonville Community Center, to provide social services for Clackamas County residents aged 60 and over. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for choice model services. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under community corrections, approval to apply for a grant between Criminal Justice Commission, Justice Reinvestment and Clackamas County to continue the pre-trial program. Under business and community services, approval of a continued participation in the Oregon Digital Library Consortium and purchase of eBooks and e-audiobooks from Overdrive LLC. Approval of purchase from Biblithica LLC for eBooks and e-audiobooks in Apple and Android format. And under tourism and cultural affairs, approval of a contract with Lawrence PR, Inc. to provide public relation services for darkside tours and media assistance. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Let me see. Uh, do any commissioners want to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing. Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And the next up is the county administrator update.
As commissioners, I'd like to share with you two pieces of great things happening here at Clackamas County with our staff and you. First, two weeks ago, the county's Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Council hosted the eighth annual CLACCO Community Festival right here at Clackamas County in our circle of honor. It attracted more than 550 attendees, the most ever, to enjoy live music, fun, family activities while celebrating our rich regional culture and heritage. The attendance is, has increased more than 100% from last year and continues to grow every year. And including 100 young people took part in the event this year. So thanks to our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Council for hosting this event. Second, Water Environment Services has received yet another award, this time again related to the Carley Creek Project. This is from the Oregon Association of Clean Water Agencies, presented its 2019 Outstanding Member Agency Award to Water Environment Services for its leadership in pollution prevention and innovation in environmental management as demonstrated by the Carley Creek Water Quality Project. This is the second recent award West received because of the Carley Creek Project. So thank you to our West team for their fantastic work and your leadership. That's my update for today, commissioners.
Thank you very much. And we'll start with, uh, uh, Ken, uh, first.
Thank you. Um, first, um, I would like to repeat what we were told at our Tuesday meeting because I think this is important for the new audience to hear. And that is at the Vets Village, eight people now have been moved into supported housing. We now have a, a, uh, veteran who has qualified for peer support. So he will, or she, I'm not sure if it's a he or a she, quite frankly, but that person will be helping our veterans. And they have, uh, obviously as peer support have a particular perspective that maybe, maybe the rest of us do not have. Uh, one of them has also received a job at the airport. So, and, and then the final, the final thing on that is that, um, it's one of the few areas in homelessness where the numbers have gone down in Clackamas County. We have less homeless veterans than we had. So slowly but surely, we are moving in the right direction. I would like to thank my colleagues for attending the Vietnam Veterans Penning Ceremony, uh, the other day at Clackamas Community College. Appreciate that very much, 100% attendance. And, uh, I also thank you for your support of the, uh, Purple Heart Resolution today. It's, uh, as you know, it's appreciated by that audience that, that you saw here today and I personally appreciate it. I attended the Oregon-China Council Conference, um, and it, once again, I'll, I'll repeat a few numbers, but our relationship with China is important. And while the negotiations are going on at the international level that are well above our pay grades, uh, maintaining a positive relationship with our sister county and other counties that we have, um, developed a relationship with as a result of Commissioner Schrader's outreach three years ago, um, is important. That's 30,000 jobs in, in Clack, in, excuse me, in Oregon. And it's a $2.8 billion surplus in trade. And we are the only state in the Union with a trade surplus with China. So when, at the national level, they get done with whatever it is they have to do, it will be important that we maintain a good working relationship with the Chinese business people and then with our business people for the benefit of employment right here in Clackamas County. And I'll just leave my comments at that for today. I will go to the dog. Give me a moment here. This is Titiana. She is looking for her forever home. She's a very active girl who is looking for her forever person. Mentally, she will thrive going to a training class so that she can be the best girl that she can be. She's a really smart girl and learns fast. She loves to run and jump, so she needs a home that has at least a six-foot fence and she needs to have physical exercise every day. She's ready to find someone who will help her to remain happy and healthy. For more information about Titiana or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628 or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha?
All right, well, it's been a busy week for me. I think most folks know we had a family, uh, wedding, uh, one of the first family weddings on our farm. I hope there'll be a few more to come with my boys, but our foster son, uh, Travis, uh, got married. And it's been a fantastic week because everybody came home. So I've got my two, uh, grandchildren who, uh, have American and British citizenship with their cute little English accents. I've had them all week. Uh, my daughter, uh, and her, her husband from Boston has been here and they're expecting their first child in December. So I am enjoying being a grandmother, but boy, I, uh, have forgotten. The chaos. The chaos of small children, which I have to admit I miss, but, uh, but yeah, it's, it's been an interesting week. So that's, that's been fantastic. And, uh, Travis has been one of the many kids that really kind of ended up on our farm and in our house uh, through elementary, junior and high school. And, uh, my fondest memories of our farm is the fact that I think that we became a home for other youngsters. You just needed kind of a little bit of a, a help, a leg up. And, uh, yeah, it's, it's been a really good week with that. In terms of one, one of the things I'd like to talk about is that we had a, a conversation about heritage, uh, this past week. When we're looking at, uh, how we can bring all our museums and all our resources together. That's something I'm very interested in because, uh, our, our family farm is on the National Register of Historic Places. So, you know, I have a deep, uh, under, you know, understanding of the local history and, and the history of the state. I'm hopeful that we can band together and take a look at a, a district. We have a beautiful museum that is actually overlooking Willamette Falls, the Museum of the Oregon Territory. And with all the work that we've been doing on the Legacy Project, I'm going to lead into that. We did have, uh, an update with our meeting the other day. It is moving forward. It appears as if the, the Grand Ronde Tribe is doing their due diligence to purchase that site. So we're going to be looking forward. We hope to have them in, uh, partners, uh, in, in the terms of economic development. But, but Commissioner Savis may mention this too, he was there with me. But, um, we're looking at the concept plan, we're looking at the timeline, um, we're looking at the costs. It appears as if they'll be phasing some of the building down there with the river rock as they move forward to really immediately concentrate and making sure there's access so people can view the falls, view the river. Uh, and then moving forward with some of the other redevelopments, you know, removing a few buildings, uh, that need to be removed to kind of open up the area. And also, uh, they'll be starting with habitat restoration as well. At least that's what I brought home from this. I'm so glad, uh, that's moving forward in a very, very positive way. There's a foundation involved, Willamette Falls Legacy Project Foundation that is consistently raising money. And I hope we can have the same success, uh, across the river with the Willamette Falls locks because I'm still serving on that state commission. And we are currently looking, uh, at pulling together a public-private partnership, a corporation, a public corporation, to maybe take over the operations and maintenance of that. But again, that's still in process. So, uh, that's, that's it for me this week. I did thank you, Ken, for inviting us to the penning ceremony. That was pretty marvelous because it concentrated, uh, a, a, a lot of folks, our Vietnam veterans, who were largely forgotten when they returned. And now, um, now it's coming around to the true welcome and the true respect they deserved when they came home back, uh, back in that era. That was the war of our generation, actually. So, anyway.
You had something on the fair.
Oh, yes, I do. Thank you, Mary. Mary, you looked at me and you just said the fair. August, yeah, the, one of our favorite things, the Clackamas County Fair and Rodeo. Uh, at the fair webpage is clackamas.us/fair. So take a look at that. The 113th Annual County Fair will be at the Canby Fairgrounds, August 13th through 17th, 2019. Farm fresh, homemade, homegrown. The Clackamas County Fairgrounds and Event Center, home of the Clackamas County Fair, has been a proud tradition in our community since 1907. Through educational activities, healthy competitions and youth events, we showcase all the best in agriculture and industry that Clackamas has to offer. It always falls around my birthday, so that's really kind of a fun thing for me. So, very, very cool. 10:00 AM, uh, Thursday, August 15th, we're going to be having our business meeting there at the Clackamas County Fairgrounds at 10:00 AM. And if you arrive before 10, you have free admission to watch our riveting meeting, you know, because we're just so. We'll just make your whole day to see us in action, so please come. And then go on the rides and, and look at the, uh, 4-H exhibits and all kinds of the other good stuff. But we're going to be the, yeah, we're going to be the shining star that day, so. All right.
Great. Paul, you're up.
Yeah, well, last week I, um, we got off, I got off track a little bit and spoke about something else, but I did want to just, uh, let everyone know that, uh, with all the transportation meetings, discussions and opportunities uh, that are going on around the state and the region, um, it is, uh, painfully evident at times that a number of people bring their local perspective and not really sometimes, uh, the regional perspective. And I guess, I suppose to some degree, it depends what hatch you wear. And it's not, you know, if someone comes from a particular neighborhood or a road that they're passionate about and they feel that's what they, they're assigned to do, that they represent that particular, um, a particular area or city or county, what it may, what it may be. Um, and I think that balancing of perspectives, um, of that and the balancing of responsibilities is more common upon elected officials to have that. You know, we're basically responsible for every square inch of this county, you know, from the extreme north to the east, to the south, to the west. And, you know, we just can't really pick our favorite spot and ignore the rest of the county. And so transportation, um, covers really, uh, you know, a good portion of transporting ourselves or whatever it may be throughout this county. And that's a perspective we need. So it just seems to, on this 2020, on this whole process, that without some of that, uh, balance of perspective, both from maybe modalities, uh, modalities being whether it's car, truck, boat, bike, pad, transit, but also the regional, the, the regional responsibilities of, of the wearers. So I was at a meeting just the other day, um, in the audience, listening and, uh, it was all local, 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 local. And it was so localized that it really didn't take into account perhaps other areas. And I think that's a perspective that, uh, the elected officials have a responsibility to bring to the table. And the people that are appointed, uh, by metro in this case, don't have that responsibility. So I, I just don't see a good, um, a, a good balancing, um, uh, of that responsibility taking place. The other thing I wanted to really talk about this week, I attended two library meetings, one Monday night and, uh, and one last evening. And it's great really to see the dedication, um, and the passion, uh, and, uh, around issues of libraries. The meeting Monday night was really about libraries around the entire county, actually, Eldak Library District Advisory Committee. And, uh, they're doing a lot of good work and they take their, the, uh, their work seriously. And, uh, last evening was the Gladstone Oak Grove Group and, um, just a lot of interest around there. So we're, we're, we're making progress and hopefully we can accelerate, um, a number of the issues because I think Gladstone here, they're making great progress, their new city hall, um, they'll be completed in the summer, next summer. And that, their existing, uh, city hall site will be, is the home of the new library. And they'll be ready to, they'll be, they'll be ready or in a better state of readiness than, than I think, uh, the, uh, Lodge Group will be. So, um, that's exciting. So I would look to, I guess the next couple, few weeks here, we'll be looking at perhaps signing an agreement that staff's working on, um, with the, with the cities as regards to libraries. I did want to just build, um, I think, I, to me, I think the penning ceremony was pretty powerful the other day at the, at the college. Uh, it was, it was a great event, actually. And brought back a lot of memories, um, when I was growing up. And I just want to just build on the, uh, this, the, the success that we may not even realize to some degree. Some of us do collectively of the Veterans Village. And I, again, I want to just give some appreciation to Commissioner Humberston for going to that, uh, Association Counties, um, uh, event and then, uh, going with me to the tour of some of the facilities there in Lane County. And what they did in such a, and, and I, I think a very humane way of how they really dealt with a lot of things and a lot of models that we have brought back. But the commitment we made with the Vets Village is- But the commitment we made with the Vets Village is not about, just about the Vets Village. We got more VASH vouchers as a result of that.
We did.
Just because we stepped it up, we got a significant amount of VASH vouchers, which ultimately puts them in quality housing, which is the goal. That's part of the continuum. And that the Vets Village always has been not a permanent shelter, but a transition shelter for people to transition and build a bridge towards permanent housing. And the other aspect of that, that also, I think, was influential, as I understand it, with Northwoods Housing Alternatives, to make the investment in the Pleasant Avenue Facility Project. So that just complements it. When they see that kind of commitment and other counties see that kind of commitment, it doesn't solve or help our veterans here in Clackamas County, but other counties as well. We are a model. And we followed the Lane County model, so kudos to Lane County Commissioners and Commissioner Farr.
And we got a national award.
And we got a national award for that. So, but our goal was, and speaking to the earlier housing emergency that we passed, resolution, the goal, what we discussed here early in 2017, when we made housing, our goal was to use that as a model for women and children and in furtherance, what the next step might be. And now we have the housing bond that's passed, so we have really, the building blocks are coming together. I live in a different place than the rest of my colleagues here, and I guess I feel like sometimes I'm in the epicenter of some of this because it's so visual. And when I see different camps and areas and people camping out on the street at different times of the day, and it's just growing, it's more apparent to me than perhaps, unless you drive in my area, to see what's happening. It's just a far more visual realization. And appreciate everyone's attention to it. That's what I'll stop there for today.
Thank you, Paul. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Bernard. I want to acknowledge today in the audience, my husband Kirk Mauser is here, along with my sister Sandy Foster. Sandy has visited, I think the last time you were here was when we were married in 2010. So it's a big welcome to Sandy back in Oregon, and it really means a lot to me to have her here. And along with that, I just wanted to share that our father, Elmer Paul, received a Purple Heart. And when we had the ceremony today and we were pinned this, for those who've watched this whole episode of Clackamas County, saw that we took a picture and then we had a nice conversation when we received the pin, I shared with my colleagues that our father, Sandy and my daddy, was, served in World War II. His plane, he was a bombardier in the Air Force. His plane was shot down. He was able to save some of his airmen. He had a broken arm. He was shot, but he survived that and was rescued. And Dad died when I was 22, 23, or maybe I was 23, actually. I didn't really understand the magnitude of what happened there until I saw the movie Unbroken where the plane goes down and the raft comes up and they were there. And I asked my Uncle Ruben about that, and he said, yes, that's exactly what your father went through. Fortunately, Dad was rescued, but those scars lived with him. So Commissioner Humberston, you pursuing honoring those with a Purple Heart is just so precious to me personally because people live with the pain and the struggle and the trauma, and it passes through to other generations. And we must acknowledge, respect, and revere those that have fought with that level of dedication. So, thank you. I'm not going to cry. All right. Now, what I did want to share with you all, I was out in Lake Oswego Adult Community Center yesterday for lunch. I really encourage everyone, please go and have lunch with our seniors because they, when I walked in, they said, wow, we haven't had lunch with the Commissioner for quite some time. So I encourage all of you to do that. I met Nancy and Felix and Barbara and Cynthia. We had wonderful conversation. A few things I want to share with you. I heard from a constituent who was very fearful because she had been scammed. Somebody had called her and was pressuring her for her credit card number, and they kept saying, that's the wrong number, that's the wrong number. And she's like, no, that's the right number, that's the right number. She was very, very flustered. And then he asked her for her social security number, and she went and she got that social security number. And then she hung up the phone and she's like, oh, no, I think I was scammed. She goes, I don't know what happened, why I felt so much pressure to do that. So fortunately, she got right on the phone with her bank. They put an alert on her card. She got in touch with the community center that got her connected with a detective, and they were addressing her issues. But she just wanted me to know. She says, sometimes you're under so much pressure and it just, my brain just couldn't think in that moment what was happening. And I just so appreciated her story. I also talked with another person who, and she's actually a friend of ours in Lake Oswego. Commissioner Schrader knows her very well. But she shared that she became eligible for social security disability. She receives less money than her rent in Lake Oswego. She, in her social security disability, she's been living off of the back payments that she's been able to supplement her rent. She's been reaching out to all of the services here in Clackamas County. But this, and she's in her early 60s also, but she has a disability. She is not able to work, and she is really concerned about what she's going to do. She's starting to do fundraising efforts to try to raise the gap so that she doesn't become homeless, and this is a serious problem. And part of the demographics, I really want us all to think about the demographics. So in our county, in 2011%, of Clackamas County population was over the age of 65. In 2016, that rose to 18% of our population in Clackamas County. In 2025, we expect to have 21% of our population over 65. Now, you couple that with that Americans are not saving, 42% have significant savings. We are...
Do have or don't have?
42% of American adults are not saving.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Humberston, for correcting my mis...
Make sure.
No, 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 I really appreciate it. Thank you. So we, this is a train coming down the, we need to be aware of this. The other thing that really, really, really concerns me, and I'm going to use my pulpit here to share with you all and to share with our audience, you may have heard, the media's been out about it, the regulations coming out of the federal government are changing for what's called Food SNAP, which is Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program. The regulations are changing, they are proposing a rule. Now, that proposed rule came out on July 23rd. This proposed rule will eliminate eligibility for 66,000 Oregonians, and most of those are seniors and children. Now, when a child loses eligibility for what used to be called food stamps, is now called SNAP, they lose the ability to get their free or reduced school lunch. So this is a serious problem. Our congressional delegation has written about this, has urged the federal government to not make this categorical change in eligibility. I'm going to appeal to everyone. You can make comment on this. This is America. There is 60-day comment period, and the website is wwwregulations.gov. I encourage everyone to go to that website to make a comment. Our congressional delegation is advocating fiercely on this, but you could let them know your support. Congressman Schrader is out ahead of this and really working hard, as is our Senator Merkley and Senator Ron Wyden and our other members in other areas of the state. This will be terrible. And as county governments, we are the final safety net. Our food pantries, and we have one right here on our campus, and I was talking with Rich Swift earlier this week, we have increased the number of families that are coming to receive food assistance. We cannot afford this change, so please, you know, really speak out and do this. Because the seniors there that I talked to, they receive SNAP at the Adult Community Center, and they are scared about losing. How are we going to survive? And for the woman that I mentioned, I'm not going to say her name, but I think some of you know who I'm talking about, she will definitely lose her $147 that she lives on every month.
$147?
For her food assistance. And, you know, these are people that have contributed to our community, that have paid taxes all their lives, that are working hard, and that are really trying to survive in this economy that does really well for a few people and not so well for so many. So I, with that, I just want to raise awareness and say we have so much work to do and much advocacy ahead.
Thank you. At our farmer's market in Milwaukee that I founded, one of the, we also provided matching dollars at the market for people who had food stamps or TANF is the other...
SNAP. SNAP assistance.
Well, it's also called...
...for antenati families.
Yeah. Interestingly enough, when you talk about the age of our population, you go to transportation, you talk about the Sunrise or other projects we're looking at, those people cannot ride their bike to Portland. They're going to need some transit opportunities and if not, a way to drive their car. So that, when we talk about riding bikes or to Portland on a bicycle trail, we invest a lot of money in that, I always think of that. It's very difficult for most people to ride their bikes to Portland, but it's impossible for our older population to do that. The other thing I was thinking about is, I rode the ferry twice the other day, and, you know, that's a heritage thing, too.
It is.
It's a big hunk, which would concern me about adding that to the issue, but it is a heritage thing.
I think it's a historic property, and it's very embedded in the history of the Canby community, yeah.
That's so. It just occurred to me that because one of the people who drives the boat or collects the tickets asked me about the ferry, whether we were going to close it down. And we're trying to market it better and make it more successful, and so it pays for itself. The other thing that, you know, tiny homes and cottages, cottage clusters, I saw a program on television the other night that had tiny home clusters, and I think it might have been in Sweden. And they're doing that, and people are downsizing, which is great. I also attended the Oregon China Council. It was a great, it was a really great event, and I had the opportunity to ride with the Chinese consulate...
Consul general.
Consul general to Timberline and to Trillium Lake. He spoke good English. It was enjoyable. It's all about relationships, you know? And if there's one thing the Chinese do, is they really work at them, and it's important that we retain ours. I mean, I'd love to go to China next year, but our budget is a little challenging, so I'd like to figure out a way to save that. And if I have to spend some of my own money to reduce the costs in the future, but not next year. I was thinking about our successes and, you know, before Gary was the administrator and the opportunity to have many more successes in the future. But, you know, since this board came together, we have received numerous grants from Metro that we didn't used to get. We have secured an agreement with the state to fund half of our courthouse, $31.5 million or four, I don't remember if it was five or four. And so, and that was all about relationships in Salem. It was about, I was, I had a great opportunity to work on securing that money when I was more involved with AOC, so it was great. We have attracted new business investments in the county. We sold off a large piece of industrial land that has been probably discussed for 15, 20 years around here, Cozy area, and we sold off that. The buildings are mostly built, and businesses are moving in. And that, and that money goes back, some of it, goes back to our transportation department, which means we'll be investing in roads and other things. We created the first, created Oregon's first land bank authority, which is, I'm this, I think, Monday, I think it is, or maybe one of these days. I'm heading up to the mountain with Senator Wyden and Earl Boomenhour. We're going to talk, I'm going to talk about that, that, you know, we need additional investments perhaps from the federal government. We reestablished a hospital authority that brought millions of redevelopment dollars to Westland and Oak Grove, Willamette View. We established a Veterans Village that has taken homeless vets off the street and moved them on a path of success. The board is functioning, and while we don't always agree, we have successfully moved in a positive direction. Our relationships with our employees is much better because we respect each other and love what we do, and are dedicated to be outstanding public servants. We do a recognition lunch almost once a month, you know, as for people who've been here five, 10, 15, 20, and sometimes 35 years. And I'm always amazed about how much they love their job and how hard they work because not only do we recognize them, their boss tells us how great they are. We have provided access to high-speed internet, to our public schools, to many of our public schools and public buildings, and saved millions of taxpayer dollars. We have been working hard to address homelessness, partnering with cities, Metro, to create a mix of affordable housing unit, and specifically Happy Valley's Urban Renewal District. We negotiated a portion of that urban renewal money would go to affordable housing. We partnered with Oregon City Metro and the legislature to bring investment and jobs to a former Blue Heron site here in Oregon City. Many successes. And now, the big gift. We have a new administrator and a lot of opportunity to do a lot more. And I appreciate your vision, your desire to move the county forward and address those issues that this board and the citizens obviously think are important. So I want to thank you and thank the people who attended today and who watched the show. And we're adjourned. Thank you.